Good evening, everybody. For the record, it's Thursday, March 8th, 2018, 5:15 PM. Time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. I've called the meeting to order. First item would be a pledge to our flag. Councilmember Bailey, would you lead us?
I will.
Thank you. Did you raise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can councilmember Bailey. Roll call this evening. We have five members here. And councilmembers Esparza and Huffaker, are you both with us via phone?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. I wanted to hear the yes so we could count them. First item tonight are consent items, which includes this evening's agenda, vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meetings.
Your honor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent items consisting of the agenda for this evening's meeting, the vouchers, and our minutes from previous meetings.
Second? Motion by councilmember Kula, second by councilmember Bailey, to adopt this evening's consent items as presented. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I gotta work on my timing. Next up would be citizens' comment. If any member of the audience would like to address the council on anything that's not on today's agenda, if there's something that comes up on today's agenda, you're gonna have to wave at me to let you in, but if you want to talk about anything that's not on the agenda, feel free to come up. We'll give you three minutes. Name and address for the record. See no takers. We will move on to presentations. We have two. The first regarding our Apple Blossom Royalty Proclamation. Does somebody have that, to read that in the record?
I do.
Councilmember Harold.
Whereas the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival has been a Wenatchee community tradition since 1919, and whereas the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival is a premier family-oriented festival that showcases our people, community, heritage, and fruit industry, and whereas the Washington State Apple Blossom Festival royalty help promote this ongoing community celebration and act as ambassadors of our community at local, state, and international celebrations, and whereas Greta Wirsma has been selected as the 2018 Festival Queen with Sophie Castillo and Jessica Murray selected as the 2018 Festival Princesses. Now therefore, I Frank J. Coontz, on behalf of the Wenatchee City Council, do hereby formally congratulate and bestow our appreciation to the 2018 Washington State Apple Blossom Festival Queen Greta Wirsma and Princesses Sophie Castillo and Jessica Murray. In witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this eighth day of March 2018. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Cute. Come on up, ladies. Oh, my goodness. How are you? Nice to see you, Greta. Hi, Jessie. Who calls you Jessica, by the way? I just thought you were Jessie forever.
I am Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you gonna hug?
Yes, you wanna kiss the host? What do you want me?
Perfect.
This is your first picture ever, right?
Jessica. For some more.
Did you guys have?
Yeah, me, I should. We want one. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's something that the audience would need, give them a microphone.
Yep, right there.
There it is.
So, whoa, loud, sorry. We want to sing a song for you, and we apologize in advance for our singing skills.
You're gonna sing?
Is that okay? Is that okay? Okay. Where shall we sing? Right here?
Yeah.
Right there.
There's the audience.
This way? Okay. Oh, my goodness. Ready? Where do I? I don't want to be the only one heard. Our festival is really great. We have so much to offer in our valley, from the front to over there. Everyone gathers, starts to celebrate. Yeah, I know you want to come, so we're asking you to ride in round town in our little vehicle. The atmosphere is just amazing. And we're just like, hey, see? What would we do without our sponsors? Before we never walk in the road, but you're on your way. And we're busy out all the way, yes, there's lots of people. And we're ready to walk the other way. And our little act really makes it. Our love will be the key to the swing. Down the avenue, there's so much to do. The city of Wenatchee is about to be. How do you like that apple supply? And now, happy, really know what to do. We're so glad that you're here, and we're happy that we're doing it all of you. All of you in the spring of 2018. When you're away, all of you, you're back for everyone, all of you. Yeah, take your time, the final stages. Watch our break-ins. Watch the last, yeah, we try to do. Our friends, and gather around, we'll see you at the 99th Apple Blossom Festival. Oh, thank you. We, again, apologize. We're not musically talented, but we're honored to be here.
Well, thank you. What was the technology there?
This is a speech speaker.
Excellent.
Bluetooth it up.
Oh, perfect. I knew that. Well, congratulations. We'll see you guys around. Thank you for representing our valley all over the state. I saw pictures of you in the governor's office and other places, so I know you're going all over the state for us, so thank you for representing our valley.
Thank you.
You bet. And you guys don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. I think Lyle should sing that next, don't you think? Huh? What? Oh, no, that wasn't that funny.
It's radio, he could do it.
Oh, I know he could. All right, so the next presentation tonight is Red Cross Month proclamation. Who's got the red cross?
I do. Thank you. Look at that.
It's a long one. You can...
This is March's Red Cross Month. Whereas since Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross in 1881, the organization has provided domestic disaster relief, assisted in international disaster relief, and supported the United States military in countless ways. Today, it is a renowned lifesaving force, supported by hundreds of thousands of volunteers and responsible for ensuring our nation's blood supply is always safe and at sufficient levels. The American Red Cross also provides training and preparedness programs for Americans in safety-related fields, and helps to connect our militaries, our nation's military service members, with their families. During American Red Cross Month, we honor the organization's humanitarian mission, as well as its hard-working staff, dedicated volunteers, and generous supporters, whose donations are vital to sustaining the organization's operations. Whereas, the American Red Cross plays an indispensable role in our nation's healthcare system, including as the single largest supplier of blood and blood products in the United States. These blood products are vital for accident and burn victims, patients with conditions that require repeated transfusions, and patients undergoing advanced treatments like heart surgery and cancer therapy. On average, the American Red Cross collects nearly 4.9 million units of blood each year from more than 2.8 million donors. These donations help meet the needs of patients at approximately 2,600 hospitals and transfusion centers across the country. Whereas, in addition to its healthcare mission, last year, the American Red Cross assisted millions of people affected by disasters in the United States and around the world. During a 45-day span, the organization responded to six of our nation's largest and most complex disasters of 2017, including back-to-back hurricanes, the deadliest wildfires in California history, and the mass shooting in Las Vegas, Nevada. Globally, the American Red Cross provided aid to 26 countries in the aftermath of multiple natural disasters, including a drought and food crisis in Africa, the floods and migration crisis in Bangladesh, two earthquakes that shook Mexico just weeks apart, and floods and landslides in Nepal. The American Red Cross helped nearly 9,400 people search for loved ones, separated from their families during these and other international calamities. Whereas, since its founding, the American Red Cross has also served as a vital conduit between our great men and women of the military and their families and support networks back home. To help caregivers meet the daily challenge of providing for our wounded, ill, and injured service members and veterans, the Military and Veteran Caregiver Network provides peer support through online resources and community-based groups. Last year alone, through its Hero Care Network, the American Red Cross relayed more than 304,000 urgent messages to more than 79,000 service members and their families. Whereas, the dedicated staff members and volunteers of the American Red Cross make tremendous positive contributions to both our nation and the world. Their tireless endeavors truly deserve our unwavering respect, support, and gratitude. Now therefore, I Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim March 2018 as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, and to support the work of the American Red Cross and their local chapters. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand this eighth day of March 2008. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Kulas. Hey, guys, how you doing?
Yeah.
Are you doing any trouble? Get your microphone over here. Say a few worse pictures first. Go on over. Make Anna happy, you know how that works. Thank you.
This is Red Cross Month, and we have a special celebration coming up, March the 28th. It's our Red Cross Heroes Awards, and all of you are invited to that. It's a free celebration. It's at the Convention Center, and it starts at 6 o'clock, and you'll find some very talented people who have taken part in the community to rescue folks or to bring up community efforts to help their citizens. And we serve desserts and coffee, and you're more than welcome to come down. On the 29th of March is Red Cross Giving Day, so we'd love to see people give what they can, or to consider volunteering for the Red Cross. We're always looking for volunteers. Very important, whether you have any talent or not, doesn't make any difference. We do our own training, and you might be working here in the office, or you could be deployed throughout the country. And those deployments are very exciting and very rewarding. You get to go help other folks and save all kinds of people from disasters. So we thank you very much for this proclamation.
All right. Got some action items to take care of tonight. The first is regarding an appointment to the Planning Commission. Glenn?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Glenn DeVries, Community Development Director. We were really pleased we received three candidates who were interested in serving on an empty vacancy for the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission did interviews and have a recommendation, Richard Erickson, recommending that you appoint Mr. Erickson to the Planning Commission. He has some wealth of experience and has a engineer for the district in Othello, and then worked part-time for RH2, also served on the Public Facilities Board, District Board, and has been here about 10 years, and I think he'd be a great addition to the Planning Commission.
Any questions for Glenn? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Well, your honor, I would make a motion to that we adopt resolution number 2018-11, appointing a voting representative to the Wenatchee Planning Commission to fill an unexpired term ending December 31, 2021, and that is Richard Erickson.
Second?
Motion by councilmember Bailey, second by councilmember Markhart, to adopt resolution 2018-11, appointing Richard Erickson to the Planning Commission. Discussion?
Glenn, are you with this appointment, or are you at full?
We are.
Sure. Okay. Good.
Looking at his application, he's very qualified. We're lucky to have him.
We are, and we had, the other candidates were wonderful as well, and we'll be encouraging them to look at vacancies in the future. Just, it's really wonderful that we have that many interested and engaged people interested in these positions. It's, so, they're all would be great additions to future vacancies in the future.
Good. Great. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Next item of our agenda tonight is regarding a multifamily housing tax exemption agreement. Stephen Nishwander, are you here? No, doesn't look like Stephen's here. Looks like Mr. A. Jackson, Mr. DeVries.
Good evening, Mayor and council. John Ajax, senior planner, and Glenn DeVries, our Community Development Director. So before you sit down, it is a resolution number 2018-12, and this is for an agreement between the city and Pierre Street Apartments LLC to construct a 142-unit market-rate multifamily apartment complex at 615 Pierre Street. And so what this agreement would do would authorize the Community Development Director to issue a conditional certificate of acceptance for a tax exemption for a period of eight years in return for constructing those units.
So, John, if it was Bob the Builder, and he wanted to come in and build 142 units, would we offer him the same thing?
We would. In fact, to expand on that a little bit, given the recent lack of supply of housing, the city actually last year expanded this boundary to incorporate a much larger portion of the city, and it would allow any, anyone that constructs over four units to apply for the same program.
Anyone?
Anyone.
I remember we did the expansion expressly to address motivation and encouragement for additional multifamily units.
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear, that it's available to anybody who, more than four units, to help us with our housing crisis. This was a decision that the council made to encourage this type of development. Any other, guys have any questions for John or Glenn? I know there's been some discussion. Didn't know if you had any other questions for them.
I guess the only question that I have is, what's, I guess, we've got this one coming. We did what, one, or had one of these before?
We haven't had one in a long time.
Yeah, I was gonna say...
This is the first one that, I think, under the new...
Under the new, the new system.
And I think maybe the older ones have probably expired or close to expire, so this would be one of the first ones we've done in a while.
Yeah. So, beyond this particular 142 units, what, is there any others in the pipeline that are, anticipate taking advantage of this?
Not that we're aware of, but when we have pre-application meetings with applicants, we always make them aware of it and encourage folks to consider it, and again, to moving towards trying to meet our affordable housing goals or our need for market-rate housing in the community.
Yeah, I think at this point, my personal preference would be until we get somewhere between that 3% to 5% vacancy rate where people have choices, I think we need to encourage some form of development. And we've talked, you know, at Public Works Committee and others, about what's the government's role in trying to get some of this started, and beyond us going out and building 142 of our own units. These sorts of ideas will, if it encourages development and encourages getting the housing units built, it's something we ought to be doing. I would anticipate, based on what I'm hearing, that the next two major sort of developments that we're hearing are probably going to take advantage of this as well. There's two others that are somewhere in the pipeline, you know, not obviously to the finish line yet, but I'm thinking in order to get these things to pencil that I think we'll find some more of these.
It'd be healthy, isn't it? We had some group come in that, there's some number between 500 to 1,000 we need to be healthy at 3% to 5%.
Yeah, well, we were 1,600 units short without growth two or three years ago. One of the apartment developers, in a very public meeting that I was at, said that in the city of Wenatchee alone, we need 1,100 more units. So, again, the way I will judge it is when the vacancy rates get to a point where people start having options and choices, and then I'll go, okay, it seems to me like we've accomplished what it is that we want to accomplish, and hopefully that sooner rather than later, but these projects take time, and so I would anticipate it would be a number of years before we get to where we've got those sort of vacancy rates again. And so I hope every developer decides to take advantage of it, and we get 1,000, 1,200, 1,500 units built, and vacancies get where they need to be, and we can turn off the spigot. But right now, I think it needs to be on.
Now, this particular development, this is basically just market rate, where you don't have any low-income or moderate-income units being reserved here, so that, I guess, would be kind of my concern too, that it, you know, fine, market rate is fine, and we need those, but we also need these others, and so hopefully this, I think the idea was that this would also incentivize that, and so if all we end up with is just market rate, then we're not gaining any ground on that other end.
My understanding, and staff will correct me when I'm wrong, which is most of the time, there's two different proposals that are available. There's the eight-year exemption, market rate, if you want another four, go to 12 years or something, then you have to do some sort of lower-income sort of housing, so we kind of let the market kind of dictate what it is they're trying to get at. Is that correct for...
That is correct.
Pretty close?
And additionally, part of what we learned through our housing study and the conference of plan update is that down renting's occurring, so if we provide, if we're providing more market-rate housing, it frees up more affordable housing units as well, so it has that benefit.
Do we have any way of measuring that? You know, the down renting, and, you know, as we get more market-rate stuff in, that that releases, is there some kind of metrics that we have to track that?
I think it'd be something we should study, especially as we're looking at our next update process and look at that.
I think, I think we'll see it in, if we got Section 8 vouchers, we actually have places for them to go. That would be a good sign, right? I think if this 142 units fills up, fills up immediately, right? I think that's a sign that that's, some of those people are moving, or I think you'll see some of it. For me, it's when you get vacancy rates to a point where people have choices, that will fix some of this, right? Right now, there's no choice. That's why you get the down renting. There's just no other place to go.
Right. I understand that, it's just that...
And hopefully you'll get some...
I'm looking for some data, rather than anecdotal. You know, that's, Steve, you had, you were shaking your head fairly vigorously there.
In the 2016 study, it provided a table of housing units versus income, and so we just need to have that table periodically and just see how, where the surplus units are and where the deficiency units are in relative in that table, and that would be the easiest way to measure.
Is that easy to measure?
Yeah, the guys that we hired know how to get that data out of the, yeah.
Out of the system.
Out of the system. Okay, good. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for Glenn or John? If not, I'd entertain a motion if we had one.
I'll make a motion.
I just want to comment that I think this is a great win-win for the city. This is a great way that we can contribute to help resolve the problem, so I think it's a great, a great program.
Thanks, Keith.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2018-12, authorizing the execution of the multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement.
Second?
I have a motion by councilmember Poyer, and a second by councilmember Harold, to adopt resolution 2018-12, authorizing the execution of a multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Jacob, supplemental with RH2 Engineering.
Good evening. Jacob Hyler, Engineering Services Manager. So I'm here tonight to talk about our Red Apple Road project. Just gonna give you a quick overview of where we're at. We were awarded a grant from the state's Transportation Improvement Board in 2016. We selected RH2 Engineering to perform the design work. In late 2016, began design in 2017 after we had a contract executed. In terms of improvements, this project, we'll put a new water main in Red Apple Road between Miller and Fuller. It'll install a mini roundabout at Miller and Red Apple Road, put new sidewalks on both sides of the road throughout that corridor, as well as bike lanes. At this time, we're, we've gone through about a year worth of design work. The project is out to advertise, it's being advertised right now, and we will accept bids, open bids tomorrow. The reason I'm here tonight is to go through and present a supplement for RH2 to perform the day-to-day inspection and construction management services as part of this job. Our staff is pretty well-spoken for, both, on the construction side, we'll be doing McKittrick, the McKittrick Street project here, that also opens tomorrow, and then on the design side, we're vigorously wrapping up several other projects that will go this summer, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't have a question on the project as much as, I was wondering to the extent that this flyer was distributed to property owners.
So that, that particular flyer was administered, mailed out to folks, I don't remember what the radius was within the project limits, but also to, you know, ambulance companies or the fire department, just to link the school district, to make them understand that...
Yeah, I was, I was curious with the mini roundabout going into South Miller and Red Apple, whether we extended notice up to folks who live on the other side of Red Apple, example, up to, say, South Hill Drive and maybe South Miller, that roundabouts coming to their neighborhood, because they're not going to really pay much attention to the blue line...
Right.
As much as, what's this thing that you just put in the middle of my intersection?
Right. And, like I said, it was, it was within a radius of the project limits. I don't, I don't know what that is off the top of my head. I can, I can look into it, though.
And we've had some conversations, I've had with some of the neighbors regarding the intersection there, and some T-bones, and people running the stop sign, really not unlike we had at Maple and Western Avenue, although not to the extent, and they've asked for something, I'm not sure that something they asked for was a mini roundabout, but something to slow down traffic and make the accidents there.
I think the mini roundabout they wanted was actually at Vista Place and Red Apple to slow the, slow the herd down that's coming down Skyline.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so any other questions for Jacob? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I move for a city council approval and to authorize the mayor to execute supplemental number two with RH2 Engineering Incorporated, providing for additional design and construction and inspection services for the Red Apple Road Preservation Project Number 1607.
Second?
I have a motion by councilmember Harold, a second by councilmember Bailey, to authorize the mayor's signature on supplement number two with RH2 Engineering for our Red Apple Road Project 1607. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jacob.
Thank you.
Mr. Owen, Project 1703, Osh Dot Mission Avenue paving project. What do we got going on?
Evening, Mayor and council. I'm Gary Owen, city engineer. I'm back again, this time with an amendment to the interlocal that we had you sign last year with the DOT for their big paper that's going this year. Actually, Jacob is probably doing most of the work coordinating after picking up after Jennifer Sagan left and coordinated a lot of stuff with the DOT on this. One thing that we decided last year to do that they finally got around to getting included, and the purpose of this amendment is installing an additional conduit from the, basically from the Igloo to the Wenatchee River Bridge, so the North Wenatchee Avenue portion of this project. We've got conduit in the road now from the Cellar Bridge all the way to Dell's Triangle for purposes of communication for our signals and the DOT for their traffic cameras and that sort of thing for a future ITS system on SR 285. And so what, they were, the DOT and us were approached over a year ago now by the Zale Group...
Give a motion by Councilmember Harold, a second by Councilmember Bailey to authorize the mayor's signature on supplement number two with RH2 Engineering for our Red Apple Road Project 1607. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jacob.
Thank you.
Mr. Owen, Project 1703, Washdott, Mission Avenue paving project. What have we got going on?
Evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Gary Owen, City Engineer. I'm back again, this time with an amendment to the interlocal that we had you sign last year with the DOT for their big paper that's going this year. Actually, Jacob is probably doing most of the work coordinating after picking up after Jennifer Soggin left and coordinated a lot of stuff with the DOT on this. One thing that we decided last year to do that they finally got around to getting included, and the purpose of this amendment is installing an additional conduit from the, basically from the Igloo to the Wenatchee River Bridge, so the North Wenatchee Avenue portion of this project. We've got conduit in the road now from the Cellar Bridge all the way to Dell's Triangle for purposes of communication for our signals and the DOT for their traffic cameras and that sort of thing for a future ITS system on SR285. And so what, they were, the DOT and us were approached over a year ago now by the Zayo Group, asking if they could throw another conduit in that trench basically for their use. And we have a franchise with the Zayo Group. And we entertained that. We looked at a couple of different ways to get it done, and this seemed like the best way to get it, get that accomplished. Actually lowers the cost for the other conduit work for us and the DOT for our two conduits.
Was this a little down this edge like they did kind of heading down Shalane Street a little bit, kind of?
It'll be similar to that, except it'll be along more the easterly curb line in the northbound lane.
Got it.
And it'll disappear because that, this will happen before the final paving comes along.
Got it, okay.
So nobody will see where the trench is after the work is all done.
Okay.
So this amendment basically just adds another group of work that separates that work for cost purposes, for the DOT to bill us. Our intent is to in turn bill the Zayo Group when we get an agreement in place with them, which we expect will happen sometime, sometime this spring. The DOT is going to be going out to advertise this for bids for construction in the next month. They won't start construction till probably sometime in late May at this point would be the soonest, would be my guess.
Is this all night work then?
The majority of it will be night work. There's a lot of stuff they can do. They can't disrupt traffic too much at night or during the day, so that a lot of the stuff out in between the curbs will be during the night. But they can do a lot of ADA upgrade work, you know, a lot of the messing around with the sidewalks and, and signal upgrades and a lot of the other work can go on during the day.
Any questions for Mr. Owen? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that the council authorize the mayor to approve amendment number one to the interlocal agreement GCB 2658 between the city of Wenatchee and the Washington State Department of Transportation, providing for the payment of costs incurred with design and construction of requested improvements associated with the State Route 285 Wenatchee area paving project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Markart, to authorize the mayor's signature on amendment number one to the interlocal agreement between Washdott and the city of Wenatchee regarding State Route 285 paving project. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Gary. Item E regarding amendment to our purchase and sale agreement Northwest Wholesale. Steve King, Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm going to bring up a map real quick. Steve King, Economic Development Director, here tonight to request an amendment to the purchase and sale contract with Northwest Wholesale. And I'm going to go to a map. Okay. So a couple of years ago after the fires, whoops, we entered into negotiations with Northwest Wholesale to purchase their property as they were wanting to relocate to a more suitable location. We've already worked through, basically Northwest Wholesale's property is divided into three parcels. We've already worked through the purchase and sale of parcel A, which was the Michelson Packaging parcel. We entered into, the council entered into a purchase and sale agreement for parcel B back in July of last year. And then this parcel C is part of a right-of-way acquisition process with the McKittrick Street Signal, and it's a federal aid job. So basically, we're looking at purchasing the three, in three steps and independent of each other. So a budget was established for this, basically, purchase of all these properties prior to getting into this effort. And we are working through, engineering staff is working through the acquisition of parcel C. When that's complete, we will be able to finish the acquisition of parcel B. What that will require is an amendment to the parcel, to the purchase and sale agreement that was entered into last year, potentially lowering the price a little bit and also changing the lease requirements. As you might recall, we were allowing Northwest Wholesale to remain on the site for two years as part of the original purchase and sale. And through recent discussions, it looks like they'll be out sooner than that, and we can reduce that to 18 months. And it also changes how that lease is paid for. So basically, they were, it figured into the prices was a 12-month lease in the past, and they were going to then pay on a monthly basis for the following 12 months. Given it's taken a little bit of time, we're now looking at a 18-month lease, worked in at no cost. But the important thing is the subtraction of six months from 24 to 18 months. So we felt that was a good outcome. So I can't give you a document or disclose prices because we're in the negotiation, but I am requesting that you authorize the mayor to assign an amendment which will result in a, no greater than the current price, and a lease change in the term from 24 months to 18 months. And then authorize him to sign the rest of the closing documents once, once everything's figured out.
Yeah, I think that the essence of, and I'll get the math wrong here, but the appraisals are doing the appraisal work. Our price is fixed. I'll get this wrong. Parcel B appraised for more than we thought, so we have to use that. So then we'll get the discount on parcel C or vice versa, one of those two things. So the numbers are the same. The only really issue is, when we did this a year and a half ago, they had, you know, Northwest Wholesale was still in design stages, and they asked for 24 months, no rent for 12, pay rent for 12. Well, we've kicked this can for over a year, right? We're still not closing, but they've designed their building and they're about ready to start. So they said, hey, we don't need 24 months, we only need 18 months. And can we do 18 months with no rent? So we gave them an extra six months of no rent. We're ready to go on the backside of that. We, we're teed up. So I, I think those are good, good, a good thing for us. And we've, we've made a little bit holding the property even though we haven't closed on it yet, right? Our option price, the value of the property's going up. Seems like a reasonable thing for us to do.
So the map that's in our packet is a proposed boundary adjustment?
No, that's, it's already been done.
Oh.
Yep.
So it's too late to correct the misspelling on parcel B?
Could be the northwest, northerwest.
I can't remember what's in the packet, what the map version is in the packet.
Spells northwest, N-O-E-R, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That may have already been corrected.
Has it already been corrected?
Okay.
Let's hope so. We don't want 50 years from now thinking that we didn't know how to spell.
Oh, okay.
All right. Any other questions for Steve? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the amendment of the purchase and sale agreement with Northwest Wholesale and authorize the mayor to sign all closing documents there too.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Harold to authorize the mayor's signature on purchase and sale agreements with Northwest Wholesale regarding parcels B and C. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Boy, that was going to be a bad one.
All right. We have one public hearing item that regarding the extension of a moratorium on outdoor storage in the North Wenatchee Business District. Will, public hearings will help first from staff, we'll ask them questions, we'll turn over the public for any comment they may have, and then over to the council for any action they'd be willing to take. So I'll open the public hearing and turn over to Glenn De Vries, Planning Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff's requesting that the city council consider extending the moratorium on certain outdoor storage uses in the North Wenatchee Business District north of the Wenatchee River. The current moratorium expires on March 14th. We had a hearing planned with the planning commission, but we did not have a quorum. So unfortunately, we apologize, we were not able to meet the previous timeframe. And so we are asking that we extend that an additional six months. We won't need the full timeframe. And we anticipate a hearing with the planning commission this month on the 21st. In your agenda packet, we tentatively had talked about an April 12th hearing before you, but we'd probably propose to change that within the six-month period so that we were able to have a workshop with you prior to going to hearing.
Can I take it staff's done quite a bit of work on this already, so?
Correct. And we actually have worked with the planning commission to where we have a draft proposal. It's gone through a comment period. And so we'll be able to have that before the planning commission this month and then be able to workshop that with you to discuss that prior to going to hearing with you, should you choose to extend the moratorium.
Any questions for Glenn? If not, I open up to any members of the public that would just, wish to address the council on this public hearing item. Seeing no takers, I will turn over to the council for any action they may be willing to take.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2018-07, extending for an additional six months the moratorium within the city of Wenatchee on the establishment, citing, location, permitting, or licensing of outdoor sales or rentals, or the storage of merchandise, inventory, or equipment in the North Wenatchee Business District until September 8, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Bailey to adopt ordinance 2018-07, extending for additional six months the moratorium regarding the citing, location, permitting, or licensing of outdoor sales or rentals, storage of merchandise, inventory, equipment in the North Wenatchee Business District. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Glenn. Mayor's report. I don't have a lot to report. I would say items from Olympia, sounds to me like the Voters' Right Act in some sort of form has passed both houses and probably expecting the governor's signature soon. So we will get that to you. Steve Smith will interpret that for us, and we're going to follow up, I think, in April or sometime regarding what the effects of that are. Good news for us is we do have, very interesting, we did a request for some NEPA money for Confluence Parkway. We asked for $600,000 out of the transportation, supplemental transportation budget. It was not in the House version, and it was not in the Senate version, but it magically appeared in the conference agreement, which had passed both sets of the House and is awaiting the governor's signature. So we will have $400,000 for the city to start the environmental process in Confluence Parkway. So that is a big thing for our city. When you see either of your two representatives or Senator Hawkins, please thank them for that. That is a big step forward when we're going back to DC and we can say we've got the money, we're starting the environmental work. So we're going to have to figure out how we're going to do the environmental work and which one of our staff's going to be in charge of it. We haven't quite gotten through that part of it yet. But we'll obviously be hiring consultants, but in the same token, someone's got to be managing them and making sure the workflow happens. We'll have some discussions on how we're going to, going to go through that process. But that's some really great news for us on starting that process. Don't know whether or not there'll be a city contribution. There's not a match required, but if it comes up that the first run's half a million bucks and they've got 400, we may have to come up with a little bit, but we'll figure that out. But that's a, that was really great news. Have we heard anything on Our Valley, Our Future, or any of the other asks over there? I haven't followed it.
Yes, so I heard from Shiloh that Our Valley, Our Future is in, for, in the operating budget for 140,000. And she was very thankful for Representative Steel Kundada for making that work.
Is it on both sides?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Okay.
That's really positive.
Yeah. So, you know, we're helping fund Our Valley, Our Future, and there was a request to get some state money as they like what we're doing. And I think somewhat tied to the Alcoa issue and the closing and kind of what, what we're doing next sort of, so I think that was, that was good as well. I know Shiloh's been over there a bunch. I only made one trip. I didn't make two trips. I can't, I guess two trips. I lost track. Anything else, Allison, from the mayor's office?
It's really lots of projects, I think. Looking forward to the results of the two bids tomorrow. Our engineering department's really busy, housing's busy. We had an update from the Trust for Public Lands on Met Howe Park. They'll be back in April to talk about that project. And then we, Anna, hats off to Anna, we got our annual report out this week, and hats off to Tammy in the Wellness Committee, got the Well City Award again. So things are plugging away.
Chamber banquet next Wednesday?
Yes.
I don't know who's all signed up and all that sort of stuff, but don't forget that. Is it at the Convention Center?
Yes.
The Chamber Banquet?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Sunday Book Open House, Wednesday, March 20.
Okay. Councilmembers, anything for the good of the order? Any other stuff you're working on?
We had our monthly board meeting for Masala Sister City and reviewing applications for, to go to Masala. And there's, so far, there's nine applications. We're expecting some more though. And they won't be here for Apple Blossom this year, but they will be here for Wings and Wheels in October. So we'll be working on that.
Good. That'll always fun.
Your Honor, just a quick report, I guess. I just got back from a conference in San Diego. The Risk Management Agency that we insure with is part of a larger national organization that oversees, not oversees, but provides support for insurance pools. And I guess it's comforting to know that RMSA is very highly thought of, the projects that we have taken on and some of the things that we have done to bring good physical stability to the organization and so forth in the last few years has, has paid off. So we, we are, the association is in good shape and, and it is recognized as such nationally. So...
That's great. And I do, as we continue to do things and represent and use them for pre-litigation staff, and they continue to do great work and keep us out of trouble. So we, we're not other governmental entities maybe in our region not doing so well.
And just, you know, a number of sessions that I went to with a lot of the changes that are coming down the pipeline and, particularly in smart technology and driverless cars and vehicles and all those kinds of things, it raises, opens up additional cans of worms that, for liability that, and risk that we are going to be taking a good hard look at how we position ourselves on those kinds of things as well.
Good. Well, thanks for going. Thanks for representing us on that. Anything else?
Ruth and I met with Confluence Health with Mr. Doyle and CFO and the CEO, Dr. Rutherford. And we're going to try to come up with a conclusion regarding, we did that one year, kind of figure it out. So they want it kind of wrapped up by June, and then we're going to get some information. They're going to get us some information back about property tax and sales tax and kind of go from there. So it's progress.
Thanks for doing that. Be nice to get a longer-term deal if we can.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Next week's work session, what's on?
Our advisory boards, and then we'll have a report on our homeless steering committee and their reorg.
Excellent. Okay. Anything else for the good of the order?
Your Honor, I will not be here next Thursday, so...
Okay, perfect. All right, everybody.
I will be, I will appear by phone next Thursday. I'm going to the cadet graduation at the Police Academy.
Okay. Great.
But I will appear by phone.
Okay. All right, everybody. Nothing else? We are adjourned.